Me and, um, Ashley.
Alright, all thirty?
Yeah, we have memberships.
Yeah?
So we stand there and drink until we're like tipsy.
The special meeting is called to order. Will the Secretary please note that all board members are here? Uh, please note that today's meeting is being live streamed. Also please note that we have Spanish interpreting services available in the back of the room. Audio please?
Si necesita intérprete en español, favor de mirar a nuestro intérprete que se encuentra a un lado del cuarto. Gracias.
The first item on the agenda is to a United States Department of Education certification under Title VI and SFFA v. Harvard. Ms. Andrade?
Okay, thank you President Napa. Board, tonight you'll be deciding on whether or not to sign a certification or direct me to sign the certification issued by the U.S. Department of Education and released through our state agency recently, which attests to full compliance with Title VI, the Civil Rights Act. As a district, we typically sign these attestations every year and comply with federal law. Once signed, we then receive our federal dollars. To give you an idea of, uh, what we receive in Phoenix Union, this chart displays or illustrates the areas in which we qualify for funding and then the dollar amounts associated. So you can see, um, I have my glasses on, from Title I, the entitlements, through English language learners, which is Title III, IDEA, supporting our special ed, all the way through. Um, and our food services are technically also, um, done through a federal grant, nutrition grant. You could see that this total is, uh, almost forty-six million dollars. I want to say that our commitment to our students, our families, our staff, and our community is truly evident in how and where we invest these federal dollars. These funds are used for direct services and supports for our students beyond the basic instructional expectations. Here you're going to see the programs, services, and support that make up our federal programs, including food services and nutrition, which allows every student to receive a free lunch and breakfast every day. So there's lots of different programs that make up the, the total federal program. I do want to point out that about sixty percent of these dollars, so sixty percent of that forty-five million, um, are dedicated to staffing positions. So whether that's admin, certified, or ESPs, they're, they're the boots on ground that help our students, whether they're in the classroom, the cafeteria, a summer program, or wraparound support. Sixty percent of these dollars are, are positions that help our students in our community. And while we don't know exactly what will be allocated to public schools with federal dollars in the coming years, there's some uncertainty there. I can assure you, we stand firm in attesting to the compliance with Title VI, Civil Rights Act, and will always act in the best interest of our students and our community. Having said that, we, myself, and the executive team recommend the board sign the certification to receive federal funds. President Napa.
I would like to motion to convene an executive session for legal advice on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by myself and seconded by Clerk Oliver. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move into executive session.
...
President Napa, Board Member Pastor Rivera, we needed your vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Cross.
Thank you, President Napa. I vote aye and I'm going to give an explanation and it will be short. I'm not a win- I don't talk a lot, so I will be very brief in that I have been a fighter all my life, but you have to choose your battles and we can lose on this battle. So I definitely affirm to the motion. I feel that if we don't, as a member, I am financially responsible for this district and I want to see it go on and I don't want to see encroachments of charter schools and private schools coming in and taking away the wonderful programs we have for our students and the employment of our employees. So I will back off on my fighting person that I can be and peacefully say yes to this motion. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Representative Marquez, Clerk Oliver.
Come here, baby.
All right, so President Napa, I'd like to explain my vote. I have a different perspective than Board Member Cross. I don't, I don't see this as a surrender or capitulation. I see this as the other two colleagues talked about, the other two board members talked about, a necessary evil for now. But I need to have it on the record that we are Phoenix Union and Phoenix Union is the tip of the spear in Arizona in school districts. Should this administration or ADE attempt to try to force us to change our values in this district, then we do stand and fight. They will not hold us hostage with our federal funding. And so I say on the record that I do not comply, I do not capitulate. We do not capitulate as a board freely. We are doing what we believe is best for all in Phoenix Union High School District and across the state of Arizona because we know that how's Phoenix Union goes, so goes the education in the state of Arizona. This is so totally distasteful to me. I have lost sleep over this, but I understand that our superintendent, our exec committee, our everybody in this room and everybody we represent, we have to go on. But do understand, if they bring the fight to us, we're gonna fight. With that, aye.
Thank you. I would like to explain my vote. I think everyone on this board has made a very important decision, a decision under protest and I echo everything that they, that they said. Last night when I was trying to put together the words to actually make my statement, I couldn't and I reached out to my daughter. She's 14. She'll be a Central High School student next year. And when I reached out to her, it was because she was reading on tyranny. She was reading what happens in a fascist society. And then I remembered my ancestors, the four directions, our four grandparents, our four seasons, our four clans. And I settled on the four things that I know to be true. The first of which, all children deserve a free and quality public education, which needs to be funded, especially at levels higher than what we get right now. Number two, public schools are the cornerstone of a healthy democracy and in a tyrannical society, educational institutions are the first attacked and deconstructed. Third, public schools are institutions worth defending, which is why we are signing the certification under protest so that we can defend when we have to and to safeguard our students, our teachers and our district. And fourth, in this moment, we are being as courageous as we can be, much like the Los Angeles Unified School District Superintendent Alberto Carvallo, which earlier this month had to defend his own school against immigration forces. And he said, "We are morally compelled and legally required to protect their rights," which is our students, our public education and our community, which is why I'm voting aye. Motion passes. Three B, request for future agenda items. Members, are there any items you would like to recommend for consideration for future board meetings? Motion three C, motion to adjourn the special meeting. Having concluded our business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn has been made by Clerk Oliver and seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see. Next item. Go ahead. We are... Excuse me, the next... ...regarding matters discussed in executive session as necessary. Is there a... instructions given to representatives of the public body in executive session?
Madam President, yes.
One, one second.
Okay.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
A motion to, to direct the public body regarding matters discussed in executive session has been made by Clerk Oliver, seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're coming back to our agenda item two A. Clerk Oliver.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to instruct the superintendent to sign the designated... What is it? Assurance of Title VI with this language or this understanding. The motion is, I'd like to note that certain items used in the certification form such as illegal DEI are undefined and thus the district is unable to attest compliance with such. However, the district provides assurance that it has policies and procedures in place to ensure compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Therefore, I move to authorize the superintendent to sign the reminder of legal obligations undertaken in exchange for receiving federal fund, financial assistance and requests for certification under Title VI and SFFA versus Harvard as required by the Arizona Department of Education to acknowledge receipt and review of the document subject to any court or other legal binding orders that may affect the requirement and further with the reservation to contest any conditions to funding that do not align with the values of Phoenix Union High School District.
I second that motion. Roll call vote. Board, Board Member Meyer.
Madam President, could I explain my vote? So like many other school boards across the country, we have been given a difficult task. Sign this paper or else the federal government under the Trump administration will remove your federal funding. The threat of withholding, the threat of withholding and stopping federal funds is a direct attack on students and family who rely on free and reduced lunch. It's a direct attack to the livelihood of hundreds of staff that make our schools the safe and unique spaces that our, that our students rely on. It directly threatens our services to special education students and cuts access to job training and career readiness programs. I looked at the numbers and I weighed my values against this immoral and vague executive order from the Trump administration. Ultimately, so much of our community's funds come from the federal government. I cannot risk letting our students be immediately cut off from the amazing curriculum and programs we worked hard to build. I cannot risk letting our students and families go hungry because lawmakers outside of the board's control are purposely misinforming the public on what DEI really stands for. Their executive order is vague and leaves a lot of room for them to guess and play around with what counts as DEI. Due to this vagueness, I do not believe the Trump administration is putting this out to our communities in good faith. What I do know is that Phoenix Union schools, our schools, are in compliance with Title VI and the F and the SFFA versus Harvard and will continue to be in compliance. With this compliance in mind, I move to approve the signature.
Thank you. Board Member Pastor Rivera.
Madam President, may I explain my vote? During our board retreat, we were told that the decisions we make today will impact the next seven generations that will follow us tomorrow. Tonight's decision is of that magnitude and importance. That's why I rise with a heavy heart but with a determined spirit. The federal government has given districts across the nation a false choice. Sign a document that undermines the very principles of diversity, equity and inclusion that we believe in or refuse and risk losing millions of federal dollars, monies that support everything from our soonest meals to special education, mental health counselors and more. I want to be as clear as possible. The actions of the federal government, particularly the actions of a tyrannical president and that of a weak Congress, does not reflect the values of this district. They do not reflect the values of public education and they certainly do not reflect my own personal values and beliefs. We are being asked to comply with an agenda that seeks to erase the true story of America, the story of Black, Latino, Indigenous, Asian, LGBTQ, disabled, immigrant in historically marginalized communities. It is an agenda that fears honest conversations about history and identity, that targets teachers for affirming their students' truths and that weaponizes systems of government against belonging. But here's the impossible decision position we're in. If we refuse to sign, our students, faculty and staff and the greater PXU community will still pay the price even harder. Not politicians, not us on the board, the price will fall harshly on those who make PXU strong. Forty-five point eight million and more lost would mean devastating cuts. Cuts to programs that save lives, close gaps, affirm identities, provide employment and open doors for many. And let me be even more blunt. This choice we are forced to make is part of a broader, calculated and manipulative strategy of the Trump administration. When our schools and their communities are stripped of their resources, what's left behind is not only unmet needs, it's a void. And to fill that void will be private interests, voucher schemes and profit-driven education companies eager to sell what they consider a quality education and gamble with our kids and communities learning. If we lose this funding, we're not just being punished, we are being pushed, pushed toward a system where only those who can afford it will thrive and push further into the Project 2025 agenda. Not signing will represent a fast track to the privatization of public education. So tonight, I am leaning yes towards signing this document, not in agreement, not in silence, but in protest. Some might see this as compliance and perhaps there's a point to be made, but this is also survival. And survival is only the first chapter to pushing back against authoritarianism because we will not let this stop us. We will continue to find ways to teach truth, to center diversity, equity and inclusion and to defend every child's right to be seen and supported. I invite you all to stand, not just in protest but in action. Speak out. Vote while we still can. Organize. Protect your students, your educators, your communities because our values will not be signed away on a piece of paper. They live in us and we're still here. We will keep fighting with whatever arms and legs we have left, just like those before us did when the system tried to erase them too. Thank you.
Board Member Cross.
Excuse me. President Napa, Board Member Pastor Rivera, we needed your vote.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Cross.
Thank you, President Napa. I vote aye and I'm going to give an explanation and it will be short. I'm not a win- I don't talk a lot, so I will be very brief in that I have been a fighter all my life, but you have to choose your battles and we can lose on this battle. So I definitely affirm to the motion. I, I feel that if we don't, as a member, I am financially responsible for this district and I want to see it go on and I don't want to see encroachments of charter schools and private schools coming in and taking away the wonderful programs we have for our students and the employment of our employees. So I will back off on my fighting person that I can be and peacefully say yes to this motion. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Marquez. Clerk Oliver.
All right, so President Napa, I'd like to explain my vote. I have a different perspective than Board Member Cross. I don't, I don't see this as a surrender or capitulation. I see this as the other two colleagues talked about, the other two board members talked about, a necessary evil for now. But I need to have it on the record that we are Phoenix Union and Phoenix Union is the tip of the spear in Arizona in school districts. Should this administration or ADE attempt to try to force us to change our values in this district, then we do stand and fight. They will not hold us hostage with our federal funding. And so I say on the record that I do not comply, I do not capitulate. We do not capitulate as a board freely. We are doing what we believe is best for all in Phoenix Union High School District and across the state of Arizona because we know that how's Phoenix Union goes, so goes the education in the state of Arizona. This is so totally distasteful to me. I have lost sleep over this, but I understand that our superintendent, our exec committee, our everybody in this room and everybody we represent, we have to go on. But do understand, if they bring the fight to us, we're gonna fight. With that, aye.